Okay, let me just remind everybody, um, we have microphones in the room, obviously, because we're live streaming the meeting. Anything you say from back here can get picked up, any ambient noise, and it'll be livestreamed, so be careful. Just understand that we got microphones here. No, he can't, he's not gonna be here tonight, so.
Who's that?
What's that? Manny's out tonight.
Oh.
Can everybody stand and face the flag for the pledge, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's my, uh, board?
Oh, I didn't think you, I thought it was.
No, I brought it here on purpose.
Oh, I, I thought it was.
No, I brought it on purpose.
I can run and get it.
Okay, no worries, no worries. All right. Okay. Doris, a second. I'd like to welcome everybody to the business meeting for the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson for the month of January, on January 27th. Um, I'm gonna apologize upfront, because we're gonna move a few things around on the agenda tonight, but we will get to everything. And we've got some stuff that we did end up adding at the last minute, so just be patient with us, but we might be a little disjointed here, so. Uh, first thing I'm gonna do is make a motion to open the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business. We're gonna go ahead and move up public comment. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? They can step up to the, they can step up to the, uh, uh, what do you call it, podium? I was gonna say pulpit, but I had church on my mind. Um, step up to the podium, just state your name, give the board your address, where you live, and then you're given three minutes, or as long as you're advancing the ball, as much time as possible. And before, does anybody from the public, other than Charlie? Anybody wanna speak? Okay, so my preamble here is, last week, what day was it, Thursday or Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, um, local elected officials were invited to the high school for a civics fair, and they held it in the cafeteria at Cornwall Central High School. Uh, the town supervisor was there, Assemblyman Ikus was there, County Executive Newhouse, um, representatives from other offices were there as well. Um, and we all got an opportunity to go around and look at some of the projects. The projects were all related to things that the students had identified in the town or the village, where they live, and that they saw some kind of gap that needed to be filled, or they saw something that they felt like, um, they could research and, and offer some solutions on. So, I went around to a number of the stations. I especially keyed in on the ones that were directed at the village, obviously. Um, and I looked at them and spoke to the students, and one of the students gave a great presentation. We had a nice engagement, and I offered that student an opportunity to take activism and advocacy and potentially turn it into changing policy. So, without further ado, that student is Charlie, and Charlie, the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Charlie. I live at 134 Hildaf.
Spell your last name for the record.
H.A.N.U.S.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear Village Board members, my name is Charlie. I'm a senior at Cornwall Central High School, and I propose that students should have the fee waived to park at the river. Every day, students return home from long hours in school to face an extensive list of responsibilities. From sports and clubs to homework and jobs, teens have a lot to juggle. These stressors cannot be removed, however, the town can do something to help. I propose that students should get free parking at the river as a place to de-stress. The river is one of the beautiful features of our town, but it's also a blue space. This term refers to natural areas featuring water in which psychologist Catherine Sanderson's found is more effective at relaxing the mind. When people look at bodies of water, their brainwaves slow down, indicating the person is relaxed. Along with that, a study from the UK found that individuals living near blue spaces reported higher levels of happiness on average. Providing access to this river can significantly alleviate stress from students worried about college grades or simply managing overwhelming daily tasks. The river offers numerous benefits for students' overall well-being. Sedona Sky Academy made the connection that teens' overall health improves when they have access to nature spaces. This includes benefits like stress relief, improved mood, longer attention spans, and increased immune health and vitamin D levels. The sensory experience of being in nature calms the mind, making it a great refugee for teens. By permitting free parking at the river, we can encourage students to utilize the river as a place to relax. Teens in this town are stuck due to Alaska Third Location. A third location is an area other than school or home that is inexpensive. There can be times when home and school are really stressful, leaving teens with no place to go. The river could be a place to relax or hang out with friends in a stress-free environment. Finally, I would like to point out that select groups like veterans and seniors have had this fee waived. I think that students should be put in this category as well. Thank you, and I hope you will consider waiving the fee for students to park at the river.
Outstanding job. I wish, as a senior in high school, I had the ability, the courage, and, um, the articulate manner of expressing ideas that you do. An excellent job, but now the board's gonna ask you some questions. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, um, so a couple things. One is, remember when you and I had spoke at the high school? Um, the question that I had for you is, you know, understanding why we charge a fee down there? Because I think originally you thought, you know, why not just make it, you know, why not just make it free? Why are we charging people? We don't charge people to use it, we charge people for parking. So, obviously, we have 76 parking spaces, four handicap spaces, and eight boat trailer spaces. And then the breakdown on fees are this, I wanted to make sure I had it right for you. Village residents pay $5. Seniors and military folks are free in the village. For town residents, it's $15. Seniors are $10, and the military is free. All non-residents are $50, except non-resident seniors at $25. And if you go down there and use the Park Mobile app, One Day app, it's a $20 flat fee, plus whatever Park Mobile hits you on top of that for fees and services. So, my question for you would be this. So, if you come up and you buy, um, a parking pass, and let's say in a family, and you're doing that, how would it work if, you know, if a student, unless a student has their own vehicle? How would that work? Because then you're gonna have, let's say, and I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't say yes to this, but then what happens if, what happens if you had, um, a mother or father that uses the same vehicle, and then they had a student-free parking pass on there? How would you control that?
So, I think the easiest solution is the student is the one parked at the river, because it's not really for the families of the student. It's more for students who are stressed out, or for students who don't have a good home life. They just wanna be able to see their friends in a neutral environment. I think it would just be, you carry your student ID. Every student at Cornwall Central High School has a student ID. If you wanna go park at the river, you just need to remember to pack your student ID.
Excellent answer. My only follow-up before I let the rest of the board weigh in is this. How do you define a student? I'm a doctoral candidate at St. John's University, and I turned 60 this week. Am I entitled to free parking at the river?
So, I should've phrased it a bit better. I meant, like, high school students, and, I mean, middle school.
College students?
Um, I wanna say college students, but this isn't really their home. But I guess, I guess college students too, if you carry. It's like, um, you've ever been to Goodwill? They have, like, if you're a student, you get a discount, same area.
So, you would say high school students and undergraduates? Not somebody that's working on a master's or doctorate? Okay.
So, Charlie, I'm sorry. So, Charlie, you're saying it runs with the person, then? So, right now, someone comes up and they purchase a, purchase or given a parking pass, if you're a senior or veteran, and you put that parking pass on your car. So, what you're saying is, is that instead of doing that, then, it's someone, a, a high school, a student, parks at the rear front, and, and they say there's no, there's no sticker on, there's no sticker on the car, okay? So, that means the police officer's gotta, and I'm just throwing this as a hypothetical. So, now what you're introducing is, you don't see a park, you don't see the pass on there, so then the police officer gets out and goes up and says, okay, you know, you need a par, you need a parking pass, or they have to produce what you would say is their high school.
Yes.
Does every, so there are a couple of questions there. So, does everyone in the high school get a high school ID?
So, yeah, your freshman year, your homeroom teacher, whatever your first period is, you get this little, it just says your grade, and it has your picture that you take for the yearbook, and that's it, and, and a code on the back, but.
Okay, because what I'm saying, though, is that, you know, you're, you're, as you pointed out, you're down there in a neutral area for purposes of, of, you know, taking it easy, wherever, wherever it might be. Um, but now you're introducing an action and a reaction. The action being the police officer potentially being down there, and then approaching the vehicle, and approaching the people in the vehicle. Who are you? Do you have a student ID?
Can the ID be put on the windshield?
Yeah, so that's why, that's why.
Tickets when.
Right, right. And that's what, that's why I was asking, what's your solution to that?
I, I have never had a parking pass, so I don't know really how it works, but whatever you guys just do for veterans and seniors, I thought you could do the same thing.
Well, they get a permit, though, and it goes on their car. So, if you don't have a permit, and let's say you're down there as a student, and you have the ID on you, which is great, but you leave your vehicle to go sit on a bench, or to go walk down to the dock, or to go walk along the waterfront, your car now is unattended, no one's in it, and there's no permit on it. Our officers are trained and expected to write a ticket.
I like the idea of you put your, you, it's like a physical card. You put that on the dashboard.
On the dashboard.
Or on the back, whatever.
How would we advertise that?
Um, we have daily announcements at the school. Say, the river is now free to, for students. The students, you just have to put your ID card somewhere where it's visible, and you can stay, you can go down to the river whenever you want, whenever you, I, I know there's like a curfew at the river, but during the day or weekends.
So, long as you have your school-issued ID visible to a police officer on the dashboard. Chief, do you see any, I mean, obviously, this requires, you know, our cops to be in the loop on this as well, but do you see any issues or foibles with a plan like this to allow students to not have a permit, but to have that on the dashboard?
Charlie, if you had to, if you had to throw a number out there of how many, how many students would take advantage of it?
I, I do not have a number.
I'm sure you've thought about this.
But I'm telling you, love Cornwall, but there's not a lot to do. When I hang out with my friends, they say, do you wanna go to X store, buy food, and go sit at the river? And none of them have permits, but I don't think you should need a permit to just sit at the river with your friends, because there's nothing else to do. And it's, there could be way worse things that kids are doing, other than just relaxing at the river.
No, I'm not disputing any of that, and I get it, I get it. What I'm just asking you, though, is, if you had to, if you had to come out with a, come up with a number, because you're down there a lot, obviously, and you see other students. So, if you, if you had to throw out a number there in regards to the number of vehicles, for student vehicles that would be down there, per day, the times that you've been down there, that's what I'm getting at.
There's normally about, like, I wanna say five. There's like, I, obviously, I'm not like looking in the vehicles, but like.
I get it, I get it.
I recognize so-and-so, and they're sitting at the gazebo, so they're parked down there. But, I mean, I, it's, it's a good number of students who park down there. They just don't have permits, and then they get hassled. I've never been hassled, but I'm assuming there gets to be a problem, and then.
Um, are we talking about unlimited amount of space, spaces? Or are we using, the seniors, um, and veterans, they have a certain amount of spaces, correct?
No, no. It is, it is first come, first served, yeah. For the 76 spaces that are non-handicap. Obviously, you can't be in a handicap space without a handicap license plate or the little, uh, placard that hangs off the rearview window. But no, it's first come, first served for the 76. So, if you're an out-of-towner, and you have a permit, you have every much bit of right to park down there as a senior citizen in the village. So, yeah, there's no, there's no way of doing numbers.
Thank you for bringing, uh, some facts and some research. Uh, I think that's excellent, makes a really compelling case. I think it's a little more compelling case for high school students than college students, and that's maybe bias on my part, that I think college students should start to think about how much things cost, and, you know, kind of, uh, you know, be, be prepared to spend the $5 a year for, for a parking pass, especially if they own a car. I'm in favor of a free pass for, one free pass per household that has a student who has a license in it. Uh, you know, so that, so just to use our example, I have two kids who are of driving age at the same time. Uh, one who took their car to college, the other who, uh, had a car to get to and from high school at the time. And, you know, I get a parking pass for each car. I think it'd be okay for the year that the licensed high school driver is in the family to show up and show a driver's license and say, I'm a student within the school district. The other, so I'm, I sort of favor, rather than having that second layer of identification where somebody has to go and check for a student ID, just that you could give out one, so that the parents can't come and say, hey, we have four cars in the family, uh, I need four free passes, because we have a high school student. I think you get one if you have one.
One per household, is what you're suggesting.
For any, so if you have a senior, if you have seniors, and there's a couple, either husband and wife, who are senior citizens, and they want a free pass, each would get one, so if they have, assuming they have two cars. Um, anyway, so, so that'll, to me, I think there's a, an administrative way to do it that uses our current system, and probably wouldn't put a huge burden on, to Jim's question, it wouldn't put a huge number more passes in play, I don't think. I, I think it's, you know.
The one problem with that is you said, per, per student who's able to drive?
A licensed driver, yeah.
Let's say, uh, they have two kids who are driving age and are students, do they get two passes?
Yeah, if they have two cars, yeah. So, one, one pass per, per qualifying driver in a household.
Okay.
So, let's say you have a veteran parent and a, a student who's driving, a high school student, that would be two passes for that household.
Okay.
Again, assuming two cars, you come in.
Would you have to show that, and, and I'm probably taking us way too far down the rabbit hole. Like, Dave goes, you are, but I mean, would you have to show registration to that person? What if the, the car's registered in the father's name or the mother's name, and?
You know, as long as the address, as long as the address lines.
Well, the idea would be is coming in with the high school ID. You come in to purchase a parking pass, you come in showing the, the high schooler's identification, and that way you know, and it's annual, um, so they have to show the most recent update. And do you get a new one each year?
You get a new one each year, January, yeah.
Okay.
And you don't have to stick it onto a specific car? Can't we just?
Well.
Well, no, I think the pass should.
Yeah, pass should be fixed to the windshield.
So, the burden on the student is the day they wanna park at the river, they have to take the car with the pass.
And, no offense, but like, what happens if something's happened to that car, and now that's a stressor in your life, and you can't go down to the river, because you're?
Well, that happens, that happens to us too. So, then you get one of your friends who has the parking pass in your car, and then you use their car. That's what's great, because you don't have to pay for it, and then someone else has to pay the gas, and you hang out with them down there, and it's all good, so.
So, so, so just to, just to put this in perspective, as I know that Charlie and I had spoken too about, you know, the services that the village provides, which is the reason why the village rate is cheaper than the town rate, or for a non-resident rate. So, back in 1987, the village collected a total of $2,991 in park, park permit fees. It stayed pretty consistent below $10,000, uh, a year in revenue that came in until the early 90s, when it shifted to around $18,000, $18,000, $17,000, $20,000. Throughout the 90s, it stayed under $20,000. Then in 2010, $23,000, 2011, $23,000. Then it, it vacillated between $18,000, $25,000, $20,000, $25,000. The real big spike for us began in 2020, obviously, the onset of COVID, and people figured out that open spaces, and you're talking about what it did mental health-wise and for, for, for other health reasons. Um, went from $23,000 in, in 2020, $26,000 in 2021, 2022, $38,000, 2023 was our high watermark. The village brought in $42,409 in park fees. Now, a lot of that is because we also went to the Park Mobile app, which allowed people to go down there, not have to come up to the village during operating hours, which are 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, but they could show up down there, park, and use their phone and do it that way.
At a, at a premium price, which is why this.
Yes, yes, and then last year, um, it looks like it went back to settle down at the mean again, and it, uh, we brought in $28,135. I would be okay with, we would have to think it through, and maybe this is something you could help us with.
I just, I would just, I would also like to point out, I think a lot of the money you're getting from people paying for permits, I don't think teens are paying for the permits. I think they're just going down there, but then there's the whole entire, oh, if a cop catches me, we have to get out of here. I think if you, I honestly think if you said students were for free, the numbers wouldn't be touched, because those aren't the people who are paying for the spots.
Or they're not currently using it, because of the cost and the concern that they might get run out.
Just be a little more comfortable for the person who's gone down.
Yeah, and it advertises it as a place for them to de-stress.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna ask you to do.
I just have one other comment. I did speak to, uh, Mr. Cordisco, who I gather you had spoken with during the civics night, and I think he talked to a couple of other, uh, board members. Uh, and, uh, I understood that your going-in position was a lot more, you know, a lot more, and that some of what we would've considered sort of the back and forth and negotiation has already happened, because you retooled the proposal to some extent. So, I think that's also a mark of, of good work on your part to, you know, have come in with something that people said, like, eh, you know, you might wanna bring it down to here, and this way, and that way. And so, I think that's, uh, worth noting as well, that some of that, um, happened on the back end before we heard the proposal formally tonight, so.
Um, what did?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, the river is actually free.
Right.
So, we shouldn't construe the fact that the car is what you pay for. And the car, the reason why you pay for the car is because we pay for police protection at the river. And we also put up, uh, a $75,000 pavilion down there. Um, we have kayaks down there, so there, there's a heavy policing presence, especially on the weekends. So, really, I get what you're saying for the cars, but it's actually free. So, I mean, I would assume that, does your mom have a parking pass?
Uh, no.
Oh. Most people do, just, I mean.
I don't know, I, I, when I go down to the river, I just, once again, like, I think most teenagers, I'm telling you, they don't, none of them have passes. They're just going down to the river.
Yeah, so.
Makes sense, yeah.
Get it.
All right, here's what I'm gonna ask for you. I think it is a great idea. I think from what you could glean from listening to the board comments, we are open to it. So, you're already moving the needle, but for us to actually implement this and reconfigure our fee schedule, because we have to put out a fee schedule, it has to be transparent, so the public has to be aware of it, and we have to explain what the rules are. I like your idea about potentially working with the high school and maybe making an announcement on this. So, what I'd like from you, all right, here's your homework assignment, because this was excellent, is two things. One is to come up with what this looks like, with the way that the board has just described it, and I think mostly speaking to what Trusty Brain had said about how this could be done in a particular household, how we would do this, what we would require from somebody if they came in and said, look, I've got two kids, but they've only got one car that they share, so I need one free student permit. How does this look? Put it on an eight-and-a-half-inch by 11-inch piece of paper, okay? So, just on a piece of paper like this, put your na, name on it. You're gonna email it to me, or drop it off to me right here at 325 Hudson Street, and it's gonna be your proposal. And then I'm gonna bring it to the village board. I'll talk to, uh, the members here at the next work session. Our work session is in February. We'll discuss it at that, it's, that meeting is also livestreamed, so you're welcome to come in and watch, or you can watch it online. You have it to me before our work session, which, what is the date? Doris? Business, but work session is Monday, February 10th at 7:00 PM. Don't bring it here at noon at, on that Monday. If you can bring it to me before then, so I got a chance to take a look at it, I'll make sure the board gets it, and we'll discuss it, and we'll debate it. And if the board agrees to it, we'll vote on it that night.
Okay.
Is that fair? The second thing is, because there's always a caveat. Um, what would you think about, um, possibly talking, when you do this, and you roll this out at the high school? Once it's approved by the board, you get to roll this out at the high school. What about trying to, if you get more kids interested in coming down there, putting together a group that could maybe help out, and say, hey, look, guys, once a month, we do this on a Friday after school, we go down, and we spend 15 minutes or 20 minutes, we bring a couple of bags, like the Cornwall cleanup crew does, we'll just help police up down there, and it'll be our little civic give-back to the community. What do you think?
As a, like a club through the school?
Well, no, just do it as, just get a group of people together and say, look, on the third Friday of every month, we like to go down right after school. We get, we can park for free down there, we can hang out, and maybe we help out, and we just do a little policing up while we're down there.
Okay.
Cleaning up trash.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
In the middle there, we call a police thing.
I think if you.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
Would that, the thing is, would that count as volunteer hours?
I don't see why not. I don't see why not.
That would work out fine, I think.
I don't see why not. You keep track of that, you let us know if you need us to sign something off. It'll be on the honor system. You come up and say, hey, look, once a month, I'm gonna get a group of kids and, a, a group of young adults, and we're gonna go down there and enjoy the park, and we're gonna spend a little bit of time cleaning it up. Because there's an old saying in national parks, have you ever been, visited a national park?
Yeah.
Anytime you go to a national park, you're supposed to leave the park in a slightly better spot than you found it. That means picking up a cigarette butt, and, or a gum wrap, or something like that. I'd love to see you kinda tie something in like that, and I think it would be a, your point about it being, um, you know, getting volunteer hours is a wonderful, you know, win-win. All right? So, you'll come see me, you'll either stop in and see me here, or you'll email me. Just go on the village website, you'll send it to me on there. The, my email is on there, it's easy to do, and I'm here most of the time. You can find me, if I'm not here, I'll make sure I'll come back when you're here, and, um, just make sure I have it before February 10th, and the board will discuss your plan at our work session.
Okay, thank you.
Sound good?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Charlie.
Well done, that's how it's done. Well done. All right, now, Charlie, you're welcome to sit around for the rest of the evening, which is gonna be Route Canal with no novocaine, as we go through all the processes and administrative work, or you can sneak out of here whenever you want to, okay? All right, all right, let's, uh, anybody else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment section and move on to the public hearings. We're gonna move the public hearings up first, the extension. No, yeah, I'm gonna, listen, public hearing, then we'll go into those. Um, so the first one is the extension of the cable television franchise agreement with Spectrum Northeast LLC. Um, Joe, for me to do this, I'm just, I'm setting the public hearing, so I don't need to.
This is the public.
This one's open.
Just make a motion.
We're closing this thing out.
So, we're closing it tonight, and then we're adopting the resolution under the resolution. Or now?
Well, I guess we wait to see if anybody has any comments, and you could certainly.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to open up the public hearing for the extension of the cable television franchise agreement with Spectrum Northeast LLC. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, would anyone from the public wish to speak about the spectrum agreement to the board? Seeing no one, I'm gonna make a motion, go ahead. I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing, um, regarding the Spectrum Northeast, uh, agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold it to resolutions, or do it now?
Well, you can see if the board has any comments before you move on.
Does the board have any comments?
I have no comments.
Agreement that we've been hammering out for 17 years.
How long is the agreement for? I forgot.
10 years.
10 years.
15, I thought.
Oh, that's a, that's the least they would do, correct?
Yeah, 15.
Oh, you're right.
All right.
So, you can move on.
Should I go ahead and do the resolution for that now, or wait and do it later?
You sure can, it's up to you.
Let's do it now. All right, so whereas an application has been duly made to the Board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, County of Orange, New York, by Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications hereafter referred to as Charter, a limited liability company organized and existing in good standing under the laws of the state of Delaware doing business at two six zero four Seneca Avenue, Niagara Falls, New York, one four three oh five, for the approval of a renewal agreement for Charter's cable television franchise for fifteen years, commencing with the date of approval by the Public Service Commission, and whereas the franchise renewal agreement would bring the franchise into conformity with certain provisions of the Federal Cable Communications Policy Act of nineteen eighty-four's amended in certain court rulings, and whereas this, a public hearing was held in the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York, on January twenty seventh, two, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven twenty-three P M, and notice of hearing was published in the Cornwall Local on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and whereas pursuant to sixteen C R R dash New York eight nine four point six, the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson has exercised due diligence to investigate and assess the technical ability, financial condition, and character of the applicant, and to ascertain the operating record and reputation of any applicant who owns or operates, or whose principals own or operate cable television sys- systems elsewhere. And whereas the village board has assessed, based upon Charter's past performance of its existing franchise agreement with the village, that Spectrum Northeast LLC has substantially complied with the material terms and conditions of its existing franchise and with applicable law, and whereas the village board has stressed, assessed further, based upon Charter's past performance of its existing franchise agreement with the village, that Spectrum Northeast LLC has the financial, legal, and technical ability to provide these services, facilities, and equipment as set forth in the proposed attached, and whereas the village board has further assessed, based upon Charter's past performance of its existing franchise agreement with the village, that Spectrum Northeast LLC can reasonably meet the future cable-related community needs and interests, taking into account the cost of meeting such needs and interests. Now therefore be it hereby resolved, that the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby grants a cable television franchise of Spectrum Northeast LLC and the Village of Cornwall and Hudson for fifteen years, commencing with the date of approval by the Public Service Commission and expiring fifteen years hence. And be it further resolved, the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby confirms acceptance of this franchise renewal agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, the next public hearing is Churchill Street Parking. Joe, this is the one that.
We're just gonna continue.
We're just gonna continue this one, all right. So I'm gonna make a motion to con- to keep open.
Open. You're opening the continued public hearing.
I can't remember if we, so we had already closed it before.
No, 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 we've never, we've never closed it.
We never closed it.
It's been an ongoing.
We open it each time we open it.
Yeah, we're just opening the ongoing or continuing public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing into the Churchill Street Parking concern. May I have a second? Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so now it's open, would anybody from the public like to weigh in? I don't see anybody here from the aforementioned street. Um, I know that they met recently with, am I missing somebody, Dave? Okay. But, uh, I know that recently, um, that the D P W superintendent and the deputy mayor met with, um.
Lori Beth.
And Lori Beth, Trustee Paleyoda, with several residents from Churchill Street, and we are continuing to work towards a solution regarding parking options and non, no parking on Churchill Street itself.
Well, let me, and let me just add to that, that, that the, uh, the residents who came out were very accommodating. We came to a good, a good solution, and the reason, just the reason why we're continuing this is because we made some, I'm not gonna call them substantial changes, but there are some changes to the proposed law that we previously had, and in abundance of a caution, we need to keep this open for thirty days for public comment. So that's why it's continued, it, there's no other hiccups on this, we've come to a good, a good conclusion on this.
Reasonable accommodation.
Yes.
I think for the record, since we have had the change, just so the public understands, this is going to prohibit parking on the west side of Churchill Street from Spruce Street, south sixty-five feet. And then from Spruce Street, south, from ninety feet, continuing through a hundred and eighty-five feet. So that, those two areas is where there will be no parking. Um, and that, that was the change.
Okay.
Well, that, that's, that's the final text after meeting with all the stakeholders and the, uh, highway superintendent.
So am I leaving the public hearing open until?
Yes, because what we'll do is, since this is the first time that the information's actually been out, we just came to this, you know, and.
Reasonable accommodation.
So this will give the clerk an opportunity to post this to the village website, so people understand what the final draft of the law is. We'll continue the public hearing until February. If anybody would li- wish to speak on this in February, they can. At this point, I think everyone's spoken as much as they want to about this, but, but people can come and speak in February. I would think that in February, the board will be in a position to close the public hearing and take action.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Do I close the public hearing now?
No, 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 we're keeping it until February, correct.
I'm not, oh, closing it and reopening, okay. All right, so I'm moving on to the next item on, on public hearings, correct? Joe? Yes.
Correct.
So the next public hearing, I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget, which has been available to the public, including having a available copy in the treasurer's office, if anybody was so inclined to take a look at that. The board has reviewed this extensively. Um, the treasurer's met with a number of the trustees, um, individually, as well as the mayor, multiple times. Um, so, would anybody from the public care to weigh in on the proposed two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six village budget? Seeing no one from the public?
Why don't you take the co- the board member comments, so they'll be included in the public record.
So I'll open it up to the board for anybody that'd like to weigh in.
Um, at our last work session, I already asked our treasurer, um, many, many questions, so I'm satisfied with the way the budget is prepared. Um, so I have nothing further to, to add.
Lori Beth?
I don't have anything further to add.
Trustee Brain?
Uh, I sat down with the treasurer today and went through about twenty items on the budget, similar to the way, uh, Deputy Mayor Kane had gone through. Um, just asking about some of the increases that were sizable in terms of percentage or in terms of absolute dollar value. And I'm satisfied on virtually all of them, and Chief, not to put you on the spot, one of the biggest ones was an increase to the salary line for, um, uh, police salaries. Uh, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-eight percent increase, is that, do I have that number right, I'm sorry, and the treasurer is here, so, uh, if I'm misstating, I don't have my actual figures in front of me. It wasn't a hundred and twenty-eight, I'm sorry, it was a twenty-eight percent increase, correct?
Do we know what budget line that is?
I'm sorry, it's, um, twenty-eight under expenditures for the general fund.
Got it, got it.
And I just, and.
It's allowing for the contract though, right?
It, right, it allows for the contract, but it's, it's higher than the absolute, uh, current potential negotiated contract rate that I'm aware of. And I just wanted to check and understand that it, um, that it, that it's all expected. There's standing, uh, step increases, there's, um, I don't think, we're not adding any employees though, right? It's, it's simply a matter of potential future negotiated contract rate, which is under discussion and, and negotiation, and then also existing step increases for the, for the officers that we already have. Uh, but there's nothing else in there salary-wise that would be surprising, is that accurate? Does that make sense? I guess I'm asking the treasurer and the chief, and the mayor, if you're aware of any specifics.
Bill, I think you, you, you spelled that out correctly, we didn't, uh, I know the board has talked about, I know the chief has done some research on potentially down the road. Obviously, it's not something that we did build into this contract, I'm sorry, into this budget, but look at potentially going to a fourth police officer. But we're still kind of exploring that, but yes, this just included, again, we had to build into our budget what we anticipate. Um, the, our budget negotiations with the two unions that we are currently engaged in negotiations with. But beyond that, um, Chief, was there anything else added on the main, other than honoring previous contracts, step increases?
Step increases to.
Details, I guess.
That's five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, but.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's small.
Some of the, uh, now I'm recalling, I'm sorry. So we had this in-depth conversation, which I then went and erased from my memory like an hour later. But, um, w- it was also a discussion about the increased details that we've asked officers to take part in.
That's a good, that is a good point, um, to, to, and, and those are related to, and of course, the chief can't predict this, because we're, the special events committee is constantly coming up with good ideas for different events, and obviously, the chief has to have more and more personnel there. Obviously, um, the village has raised its security profile or security template, um, which requires, you know, having blocking vehicles from the D P W at our big events, and the chief having to bring more officers into that, so yeah, that was stuff that was not factored in previously, but obviously would bring about considerable amount of additional funds required to pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the other thing I, uh, you know, there were a few other individual items that had sort of sizable price tag, or, um, or a percentage increase, but on a smaller base. So I, I got very satisfactory, uh, descriptions of all of it, including the one I just raised. That one just happened to be kind of, kind of a big dollar amount. Uh, but I also flagged that, uh, we're giving ourselves raises as we voted, just, uh, I, I believe the public believes we're doing an okay job, because I have not heard a single comment from anybody, even though I've brought it up in conversation with, uh, residents and constituents to say, you know, we're giving ourselves raises, right? And, um, I had not heard any objection to that fact, but I thought I should say it on the record, just that, uh, I voted for it.
Yeah, and, and Bill, I'm glad you brought that up, because I had made a note to mention that too, I know I've spoken about it from the dais here, but, um, these raises for the mayor's position and the trustee positions will not go into effect until, um, it'll, they're built into this budget, will not go into effect until the reorg meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, the April, April, April seventh, I think, is the scheduled reorg meeting, where all the rates are set and all the salaries are set. And I talked about doing this bef- before, um, about increasing salaries. The salaries just have not changed that much since the eighties, since the seventies really. Um, and I know the percentage sounds a lot when you go, an increase of fifty percent, but it takes the mayor's salary from twenty thousand dollars a year to thirty thousand dollars a year, and the concomitant, um, increase for the trustees brings their pay from seven or eight thousand dollars to nine or ten thousand dollars. So it's a, it is a very small amount, even though you say you're increasing it fifty percent, but from where you started. That will not go until after this next election, and at the next reorganization meeting, which is April seventh. So it'll be a different board, the stents will be thin. Okay, Bill, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. So Megan, um, we stayed underneath the tax cap, which was, this year was one point zero zero six seven, correct? Is that number right, Megan?
Yes, that is correct.
One point zero six seven, um, and just to give you some perspective, um, we're gonna talk about the state budget later on, but, um, our budget this year. Michael, where are we on the, on water, three million?
Yeah, I think it's like three point three, or three point two.
Our budget, um, on the general fund side is five point, or five million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. So our village budget, um, is, you know, essentially around eight million dollars when you include the water system. So five million for general fund, three point three on the, on the, um, on the water side. Um, sounds like a lot of money, it, it, it is a lot of money, but I just think about the fact that New York State just presented their budget, two hundred and fifty-two billion with a B, so we're a small, small, small village, but, uh, eight million sounds like a lot of, a lot of cost, but it also includes, like I said, three something for the water side of the house, so. All right, any other questions for our treasurer while the public hearing is open, related to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget proposal? Seeing none? Nothing, all right, now, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna close the public hearing, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing, um, into the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now I'm gonna go ahead and move to the resolution, Joe, I can make this short and sweet, right?
Well, my preference is that you first adopt the water re levy.
You want to do that first, so you're gonna remind me, we're gonna hold in abeyance, um, approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, and we will handle the, the levy when we get down to the resolutions.
That's next, actually, well, oh, okay, sorry.
No, yeah, it's, it's not, yeah. So I'm gonna go ahead and put it, I'll put it under here, adopt, adopt budget, okay, got it. All right, I'll make sure when we get to that.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes care of the public hearings, everything is closed, the Churchill Street Parking one is left open. Um, and so let's go ahead and move into resolutions. So, set public hearing to change the billing cycle for annual sewer capital accounts. Um, David, do you wanna give a quick, just for the public layman's terms, for why we're, why the board is electing to do this?
Oh, I don't have the list? When we've been, we've been going through and looking at the, uh, commercial accounts for the, uh, sewer capital, and the timing for payment of the bills doesn't line up with our ability to re levy. So what we're looking to do is change the way we bill, change the month that we bill, so that it'll fall more in line, and speaking with counsel, we decided that we're going to redo the whole sewer capital section in the village code, that's why we need to set a public hearing, so we can change that whole code.
That sound right?
Correct, yes. Um, the code currently says that we will bill sewer capital fee quarterly. Now, there's some more discussion to be had about how the sewer billing and the water billing will be coordinated, but, um, I believe it would be best to amend the law to give the board discretion, rather than say it must be quarterly, to give the board discretion as to when, how many times a year, and, uh, set, either set dates, or at least just give the board discretion to set the number of bills that are sent each year. And it could be something that we can incorporate into our standard reorg minutes, just as an ongoing catch. Uh, and this way it would give, uh, the billing clerk, the clerk, the treasurer, the superintendents, the flexibility to coordinate the water and sewer billing and the levies for the unpaid accounts.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to introduce the resolution of the village board to schedule a public hearing to amend chapter one twenty-six, article six of the village code concerning sewer rent billing procedures?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, okay, Joe, can, I guess I should go ahead and read this thing.
There's two relivies, right?
Yeah, there's.
Water rents and the tax.
Yep, two separate ones. All right, so whereas the village board has received a recommendation from the superintendent of Public Works to amend the village code, so the village's current sewer fee billing procedures can be modified, and whereas the village, the village's billing procedure amendments are intended to coordinate sewer fee billing with the billing procedures currently employed for other village charges, and whereas the village board believes that such amendments will increase accuracy and efficiency of the village's billing and its levy procedures, and whereas the village board wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing on an introductory local law to amend chapter one twenty-six. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the village board hereby determines it'll be the lead agency with respect to the review of the proposed local law or the project, in accord with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, and part six one seven, the regulations implementing SECR, since there are no other agencies that have the authority to approve the project, and let it be further resolved, the village board hereby classifies the action as an unlisted action under SECR, and let it be further resolved that a public hearing is held by the village board in order to receive comments and suggestions regarding the proposed local law amending the sewer fee billing procedures, and to receive any comments concerning the potential adverse environmental impacts of the proposed legislation in accord with SECR on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven P M at the village hall located three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one two five two zero, and is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause said public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. Um, all right, may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um.
And Mr. Mayor, just, just to note for this, the clerk does have to publish, uh, a notice and have the local law drafted and available at the time the public hearing notice is adopted. Um, in this particular case, because of the time factor, as to when the next billing cycle is and how that needs to be levied, um, we've gone ahead and introduced this to be a, a local law in February, but the, um, the, the, the board needs to provide me with some of the information so that I can actually draft it, get it to you. You can review it, so that we do actually have a draft when that public hearing notice goes out.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir, all right, I, again, go ahead, Bill, something, no?
Just sorry, yeah, the date of the public hearing that we just, um, passed is, I think, February twenty-seventh.
Which is the business meeting.
That's the Friday, um, I think we're looking at the.
Okay, the business meeting is actually the twenty-fourth, good catch. All right.
As amended.
George, can you make sure we change that to the twenty-fourth? Okay, so amended that this public hearing will be held on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the same location here at village hall. Um, okay, all right, apologize for doing this, but we're gonna go back up now to the monthly department reports. And the first one is the treasurer's report.
So, uh, apologies, uh, if I may.
Go ahead.
Water rents levy, is that also something that you would recommend we pass prior to approving the budget? Is it?
Yes, that's what we're, that's what we're saying, right?
Yep, there are two separate ones, the levy and the re levy, correct? For water and sewer.
The, the water levy. Yeah, I just want the water levy resolution adopted before we move on to the budget or the tax levy. So, that should actually be the next one.
Right, so that's this other resolution.
So the, the next resolution.
Right.
Is.
Is good, 'cause we're not doing the, the, the budget, it'll be the approval of the tax levy and the re levy, correct?
So we'll do the budget after that.
And we'll do the budget right after that.
Correct, so this, so the next resolution is the one at the bottom of page four, middle of page four.
All right, but we're gonna do the department reports first.
Okay, that's.
I'm sorry, that's, that's where I just jumped it around, so, do, we'll do department reports, and then we'll go right back to where you are, so Joe, hold that, page four. All right, um, treasurer's report, so the Di- December monthly water report for the village was two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and five cents. For the town, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents, for a total of four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Warrant number twelve, in total, including all prepaid, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and fourteen cents. Year-to-date review and expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue, four million, four hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, with expenditures of four million, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-five cents. Water fund revenues of three million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Expenditures of two million, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Sewer fund revenues at three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents, with expenditures of three hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents. Total receipts, eight million, seven hundred and six thousand, ten dollars and two cents, or ninety-nine point two five five nine percent in anticipated revenues, with seven million, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, or eighty-five point four one five one percent in anticipated expenditures through the month of December. The balance collected for sewer capital is five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents through December, and the two hundred, the two thousand twenty-four park revenue totals twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. That does include the park mobile app and the day passes. Notes, D P W equipment, bond anticipation note payoff in the amount of. Notes, DPW equipment, bond anticipation note payoff in the amount of $91,843.74.
What was that for?
Back home, right?
The last garbage, the bleach?
The last one we bought, yeah.
Okay.
It's almost time for another.
Wow.
Don't say that, Dave.
All right, the night-class interest, the night-class interest year-to-date that the village is accruing as a result of the money the village board moved into night-class, um, as of December 31st, 2024, it now totals $29,713.83. Perma grant was awarded, which is a remote learning center, um, equipment that includes one laptop and one 55-inch TV with a value of $950. Paula's the one that handled that, right?
Who put in for that grant?
Paula.
Good for her.
She did a good job on that, absolutely. The village 2024 utility re-levy is in the amount of $143,227.74. Signed under my hand, Megan Gishwind, village treasurer. Any questions from the village board of the treasurer? She already got hammered on the budget, so go easy on her.
Night-class interest year-to-date, night-class money goes to general fund? By law?
Um, I would have to look into that.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yeah, I think it just, it goes into the general fund and can be-
It can put in the water fund, that's, the only fund we have is the general fund.
Right, right, but it can be used for anything that's village-related. Okay, just like the interest on our other account, so this is just the night-class account where we put in 800,000? Was it 800?
Yeah, except that-
750 or something.
I think, I thought it was eight. Today, that's, that's the start.
Okay, any, anything else on, uh, on, from the treasurer's report? No? Okay, moving on to the building department. Who has that one?
Me.
Trustee Cornwright.
Report for December 2024, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department, building permits issued six, certificate of compliance occupancy issued eight, onsite inspections fourteen, violations one, stop work orders zero, municipal searches two, solar panels zero, and fire inspections three. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer, who's busy tonight.
Okay, um, yeah, Manny has, uh, had an appointment down in Rockland tonight and couldn't be here, um, I think the report speaks for itself, so any questions of Manny, you know, be sure to give him a shout tomorrow. Okay, next order of business is the fire department, trustee Paleyota.
December 2024, department report. Automatic alarms four, two drills, four EMS calls, two fireworks standbys, two meetings, mutual aid to other departments two, odor investigation one, parades one, structure fires four, work detail two, total volunteer hours 486.5, total events were 24. We received the interim engine four, one, two. We sent it for the wheel alignment and to address electrical issues with compartment door warning lights, excuse me, a buzzer and an engine brake. We'll install radios and plan to have the engine in service shortly. Our firefighters made excellent stops at the structure fires on Stable Way and Bayview Terrace. We received mutual aid from Cornwall for the Bayview Terrace fire, mutual aid for the Stable Way fire, including Cor, included Cornwall, Balesgate, New Windsor, West Point, Woodbury, Salisbury Mills, and Fort Montgomery. They were four mutual aid tankers to ensure adequate water flow to extinguish the fire.
How far was the, uh, what was the closest hydrant to the Stable Way fire?
Down on Mountain Road, right?
Mountain Road and the Boulevard.
Yeah.
How many feet of hose?
We laid out around 1,700 feet of hose, but that wasn't from the hydrant.
Oh.
That was just from the-
That was from-
From the tanker, from the station.
Yeah, so that, that was from Mountain Road and Stable Way. We had a mutual aid engine drop a line there, and it relayed to our engine up at the top of the hill.
I see, okay.
Mike, the, the, the motor vehicle fire on Taft, um, what was the result, where did that vehicle end up going? Is it still like a charred-out hole at the residence house?
I, I don't know, I haven't been down there, but they were gonna hire a tow company to come get it.
Got it, okay. That was yesterday, right?
Uh, that was Saturday evening.
Saturday evening, okay. Okay, um, Mr. Chair or Assistant Chief, anything to add to the report?
Nothing.
What was the cause of that car fire?
It's undetermined this time, but it, it seems to have originated in the engine compartment in the area of the headlight housing, so we're thinking possibly electrical, but it's right now still under investigation.
But no foul play?
No, nothing suspected.
Okay, all right, next, uh, department report is the police department, trustee Brain.
The Cornwall and Hudson Police, monthly police department report, December 1st through 31st, 2024, there were 479 total calls for service, there were zero calls related to felonies, under misdemeanors and violations, there was one for fraud and two pedate larceny, arrests zero, uh, vehicle and traffic calls, there were four property damage accidents, 18 traffic summonses issued, nine traffic warnings issued, three parking summons issued, 20 traffic enforcement posts, two speed or radar sign postings. Non-criminal activity, there were six fire response calls, one domestic incident, two alarm response calls, two noise complaints, two suspicious incident calls, five animal complaints, one disorderly person call. Departmental assists, the town, the village assisted the town of Cornwall PD 18 times, six assists of EMS, one of another agency, two other police agencies, performed one welfare check, and two citizens assists. During the month of December 2024, the Cornwall and Hudson PD assisted with both traffic and security for the annual COH menorah lighting. During the month of December, Cornwall and Hudson participated in Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Grant Enforcement. The Cornwall and Hudson PD requests the formal COH Board Resolution to Surplus and put out to municipal auction one cardiac science power heart AEDG, three automatic external defibrillator, serial number 4497936. During the month of December, all COH PD officers participated in mandatory taser training and recertification, which was held at COH PD headquarters, respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon. And I, I tormented, I'm just gonna add to it before we ask the chief for more, I tormented the chief by going back over the year and just totting up all of the, uh, reports that he had submitted monthly, just to say that, um, in 2024, the department had 5,091 total calls for service, of which 1,101, uh, were categorized in these reports as, as requiring response or related to some, one of the categories that we went through here, and I'm just gonna read it off, cuz I'm so proud of my little homework that I did, but, um, uh, two felony calls over the course of 2024, this is, two felony calls, 54 total misdemeanors and violations, 10 total arrests, 467 total vehicle and traffic calls, 296 total non-criminal activity, and 272 department assists, um, and that's-
Does that include mutual aid with the town chief, or is that just specific to the village? Like, when, when we respond to a call in the town-
That's an assist.
Is that, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's under the- Yeah, the chief, the chief's report has six total categories, and I just read off the totals for those categories, and one of them is departmental assists. Anyway, it's a lot of calls, and, um, and a lot of response, um, so thanks.
Chief, any follow-up, anything to add? Okay, any other board members questioning the chief? All right, moving along, the next is the Department of Public Works, and I think that comes back to trustee Paleyota.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson, Department of Public Works. December 2024, trash collected for the month, 109.50 tons, recycling collected for the month, 22.52 tons, yard waste collected for the month, we do not know. Routine maintenance performed on village vehicles, roadside leaf cleanup continued, cold patching of potholes, yard waste collection has been suspended until spring, village hall and bandstand areas decorated for the holiday, pre-treating of roadways for snow and ice events, salting and plowing of roadways. Notes, assisted police department with road closings for the New Year's Eve ball drop, and the ball drop at midnight as well, and cleanup after the festivities. I am looking to purchase new computer software for the fuel billing system with the cost to be shared among all departments. David Halverson.
David, anything to add?
Still working on the, uh, the upgrading the system down there for our fuels, that has to be done, and the other thing that we talked about today was the firehouse with the kitchen upgrade, do you wanna save that for later, or you wanna-
Yeah, let's, let's do, keep that under other business, I added that after the agenda was already formalized, but yeah, let's talk about it then.
We did get a lot of comments after the last storm from residents comparing us to the state, and we got quite a few pats on the back.
Favorable.
Yeah, very good. What's, uh, what's the status of, um, the bridge up at Partridge and Mountain? Are we good to go in that, except for the aesthetic repairs arguing made in the spring?
The, there has been lined, the concrete's been poured, uh, it's all backfilled, everything's good, we just have to do a little paving in the spring over, over top and redo the old-
The stone facade.
Stone facade, but it's-
Have you heard anything from any of the residents? Four, four residents up there, any complaints or issues, or, I haven't heard anything, which is good news.
No, no, uh, I was very surprised, though, when we were up there for the couple days doing it, the amount of traffic for a four-home road was absolutely incredible. The amount of times people were in and out of that road.
Maybe there was hikers up there, Dave.
There was a lot of delivery drivers.
All right, yeah. Okay, any other questions for the DPW report?
That's a, that's a franchise agreement, I'd like us to figure out how to visit.
All right, um, next item of business is the water department, trustee Cornwright.
Yes, uh, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, December 2024, monthly report, monthly production, 24 million of 163,000 gallons, daily average 779,000 gallons. We collected 38 samples under our approved water quality monitoring plan. Treatment, routine operations, and maintenance, transmission, distribution, 37 utility markouts were completed, water service shut-offs, turn-ons at owners' requests, 21 Union, for Pleasant Lane, 23 Hazen Street, 26 Clark Avenue, and 205 Main Street. Water main leak repaired, Boulevard, Lee Road Elementary School, and Grandview Avenue. Fire hydrant replaced Harold Avenue, service line leak repaired, 247 Main Street, new meter pit installed, 42 Bayview Avenue, blacktop cold patch, all leak sites. Meters, read all commercial water meters, six final meter readings were completed, five residential water meters replaced, two miscellaneous repairs, 36 water line inspections were completed. Boil water advisory issued, subsequently rescinded for the following areas, the Boulevard, New York Military Academy, and Lee Road Elementary School. Notes, requesting authorization to purchase GIS mapping software, unpaid water billing list has been provided to the village clerk for approval by the village board to re-levy onto village property tax bills. Michael P. Trainer, Superintendent Water. Mike, what was the, uh, Lee Road, where was the water main break at Lee Road?
Yeah, it was the four-inch supply line to the school, it was repaired over Christmas break.
Does it come down through the right-of-way off of Willa?
No, no, it comes, it comes all the way down to Lee Road, across the playground and through the, uh, the former, um, basketball court.
Did they, didn't, did they have that line cambered?
No, but it's something that the school should look into, because it doesn't have adequate flow for fire protection, or, um, just for daily needs, if there's a, a large draw, they, they lose all water pressure.
On the Boulevard leak, what was the date and time of that one, that repair?
That was December 23rd, about, it came in around 4:30.
And it went till?
It went till 4:00 AM.
We lost pressure.
Yeah, that was a tough one.
Mike, do you put, do you give written notice to the school district with respect to that?
We did, well, in terms of what they need to do?
Yes.
Yeah, I had attended a, um, a meeting with the school district prior to their, prior to their current capital plan, and that was one of the things that I had brought to their attention.
It was supposed to be in their capital.
They chose to go a different route.
The cammering of the lines, I think, was in there, though, wasn't it, Mike?
Not for water mains.
Oh, they did not do them, huh?
No, not the-
Oh, no, not water mains.
No.
Service lines.
Yeah, we're working with them right now to have all the schools come into compliancy for backflow prevention as well.
Mike, you got a copy of the report in front of you?
Yes.
There's an extra J in the front, in front of my name up there, it's almost like J. Jonah Jameson from Spider-Man.
Hmm, look at that.
Yeah.
J.J. James, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I like it, I mean, it makes me look more official, but, uh-
J.J.
That's only for the December report, cuz they're cold.
I'll go on your performance review.
Okay.
Mike, I do have a question, and I do know the answer to it.
I, I, I'll tell you this much, it won't be there in April.
No, it won't. Well, actually, it could be.
You're right, May.
He did mention about a performance improvement plan after he read that, so.
I know the answer to this, I think, but just for clarity's sake for the board, um, the water rates, the three-tier system that the board approved, um, I believe, two months ago, I believe you already answered me on this, but just confirm for me, those rates have been adjusted and have gone out in the last billing-
No, they did not go out in the last billing cycle.
Mark.
The board agreed to have them start on January 15th, they will go out in the next billing cycle, March 15th.
Got it, okay, all right, now, I, I thank you for, thank you for-
Yep.
Clarifying that for me. Okay, uh, last but not least, the New Windsor Cornwall EMS, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, so the report for December 2024, with respect to operations, there were 415 calls for service, 100% coverage in the district, that's down from 477 calls in 2023. 271 patients were transported, the response times were as follows, New Windsor, 6 minutes 47 seconds, Cornwall, 6 minutes 10 seconds, and Cornwall and Hudson, 7 minutes 2 seconds. Calls per jurisdiction were 276 to New Windsor, 81 to Cornwall, 24 to Cornwall and Hudson, 26 to Highland Falls, one to the town of Newburgh, one to the city of Newburgh, two to Montgomery, two to Blooming Grove, and two to Woodbury. New ambulance 177 was placed into service in New Windsor, the new ambulance was ordered for the Cornwall grant for 2026. New scheduling staffing software were implemented, employee appreciation night is scheduled for January, employee evaluations were completed with raises, no vehicle accidents or staff injuries, new, the new staffing schedule started January 5th, which reduces, which reduces staffing by 15% to reduce payroll expenses. The Cornwall unit is now staffed, when possible, with a paramedic, eliminating the need to pull a paramedic from the New Windsor station. There's no update regarding when independent living will be staffing the mental health unit, they are having issues finding people to hire. Assemblyman Ikas's $100,000 grant is still MIA, we expected the funds to have, we expended the funds, and yet have to been, have not been told on how to be reimbursed for the purchases, multiple attempts to make contact have been made, and Senator Scoofus's grant funding was submitted for reimbursement, and that's from Michael Biggs, Chief of Operations.
And obviously, the chief is not here, but I think it's important also to note that the town, um, did renegotiate the new contract, which was set with New Windsor EMS, which was set to, um, begin on July 1st of 2025. I believe the way that, that Josh sought to do it was that there's gonna be an increase, and I forget what it is, don't quote me on the numbers, but I think it was like an additional $10,000 per month, it's still the best deal around, trust me, we have done comparative analytics, um, and we got in at the right time before other municipalities were left in the cold and are now trying to, you know, make million-dollar deals, and ours is well south of that, but I believe that the increase that we're paying, which obviously we pay taxes into the town, so it's coming out of their Gen A fund, um, but I believe it was set to begin on January 1st, I think I listened to the meeting, I'll have to confirm that with Josh, but I believe, um, the new deal got, is going to begun in, on January 1st, and not wait to go into effect on July 1st. There's a lot of reasons for that, obviously, New Windsor EMS, um, has fewer, um, contracts, um, they don't, they lost the one in, in Newburgh, Newburgh, um, got one of the contract companies to go that route, and so, as you can see, how funding is so critical to them, um, we have the benefit now of a paramedic, as Jim Kane just said, a paramedic stationed at 1 Clinton Street, that is huge. A paramedic stationed at one Clinton Street. That is huge. Um, that is somebody that close to, God forbid, something happening here, so. But just to give you, I'll get the numbers, but, uh, the deal that we agreed to, that Josh and I had worked with the chief big on to make the numbers work, went into effect January first, which is when the town's new budget went into effect as opposed to beginning in July first.
I got a question for you, Mike, uh, from Mike. I'm sorry, Jim.
Go ahead, go, go, go.
Um, did, did, uh, New Windsor EMS take over Highland Falls?
I have no idea. You'd have to ask them.
Twenty-six schools in Highland Falls.
I know they do a lot of mutual aid down.
A lot of mutual aid down there with, with the town of Highlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they go over the mountain quite often.
Is it?
Yep. Alright.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Do we have any idea, um, what the qualifications, the independent living, the mental health, uh, professional that they want to hire? Are they looking for, uh, is it just a social worker? Is it a psychiatrist? Do we have any idea what that is?
It's definitely not a psychiatrist, which is a, which is a doctor. Um, it's definitely not that. I, I, I'm not sure what the requirement is.
Just curious each month.
Yeah, I, I know if you follow New Windsor EMS and Cornwall EMS on Instagram, I know that they did a, they put a, they've got an office set aside for this person, whoever that, that person is going to end up being.
Yeah, they'd get hired through independent living, right? I wonder if they have a job posting.
I can give, um, I can give you Mike Biggs's number if you want to reach out to him.
Yeah, he'd be happy to talk to you about it. Okay, um, moving on. So that's all of the department reports, which means that I can move now to, Joe, which page again? We're going to the approval of?
We're going to the approval.
Alright, which page is that? Do you have that, Doris? Can I do this one? Okay, I'm gonna do them separately. Okay.
I don't think we ended up approving the minutes.
No, I don't think so.
We did not. Good, good, good catch. And I'm gonna go back up to the top again. Sorry again for jumping around. Um, and I'm gonna make a motion to accept the December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's just do that one first because I was there, but I was not at the January thirteenth meeting. So make a motion to accept the December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, was that a, that was a business meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, business meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's five ayes on that, Doris. And then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five village board work session minutes, of which I was absent. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, just an amendment. My name is misspelled, but it's a typo. I A instead of A I.
Oh, okay. On the, on the
On the business, on the, uh, work session.
Okay.
It's not important.
Okay, so that's done. Alright, so everything now, we're finally down to the resolution of the village board to acknowledge receipt of certification of past due water rents.
Correct.
And authorize the levy pursuant to section eleven dash one-one-eight of the New York State Village Law. May I get a motion? So move. May I have a second? Just trying to change it up a little bit. A second, yeah.
I'm reading this, I didn't, yeah.
Okay, so whereas pursuant to the New York State Village Law, I should have read this first, section eleven dash one-one-eight, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're already done. You adopted it.
No, I didn't. We didn't vote on it.
Oh, you just seconded. Okay, okay.
I caught myself.
Okay.
All unpaid water rents charges shall be a lien on real property. And whereas pursuant to section eleven dash one-one-eight of the village law, the village clerk must present to the village board a certificate listing all unpaid rents, including penalties with the description of the real property affected thereby, a copy of which is annexed to this resolution. And whereas the village board must authorize and direct that such unpaid charges be included in the annual tax levy and must certify the same to the clerk. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the village board acknowledges receipt of the certificate or the list of all unpaid water charges and penalties from the village clerk. And be it further resolved, the village board authorizes and directs that the foregoing amounts be included in the annual tax levy and that amounts stated be levied on the properties in default. And be it further resolved, the village board authorizes the clerk or her designee to include all the foregoing charges on the village's two thousand and twenty-five real property tax bills. Alright, you got a second on that? So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's five. Alright.
Now it's the budget.
Now, now the budget chief, uh, uh, counselor?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So I'm gonna make the following motion and then move for its adoption. Hereby is a resid, is a resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing March first, two thousand and twenty-five and ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-six, making appropriations for the conduct of village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. So whereas the tentative budget for the year commencing March first, two thousand and twenty-five and ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-six has been duly presented to the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson by the budget officer and a duly advertised public hearing has been held thereon. Now therefore be it resolved pursuant to section five dash five oh eight subsection four of the village law that the tentative budget as amended and revised be and hereby is adopted as the budget and all amounts set forth in statement one as required for the payment of principal of and interest on indebtedness be and are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified in the salaries and wages stated in the schedule of such budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amounts shown therein effective March first of two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and it's important to note, water sewage and garbage rates will mean the same. Okay, okay, and this is the third one. This is the resolution levying the total taxes and other charges extended and levied against each parcel of real property shown on the roll prepared and verified by the assessor for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year. In accordance with section eighty-eight dash three point three of the village code and section one twenty dash C C of the general municipal law, the village hereby releavies all unpaid fees for garbage and refuse collection. Alright, I'm gonna make the following motion and move for its adoption. Be it resolved that there be levied and assessed against the real property of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson the following sums for village government and other charges for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six with a tax rate of seven dollars and eighty-one cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Seven dollars eighty-one cents per thousand of assessed valuation. The general fund, total taxes for the current budget, two million eight hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Delinquent water rents and charges, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Delinquent sewer rents and charges, forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Delinquent sewer capital fees and charges, three thousand eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Delinquent garbage charges, twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents for a total re-levy of one hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Total real property taxes and other charges on the roll totaling three million, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents. The four, uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Doris. That moves to the approval of election inspectors, correct? The next one?
Yes.
Clean one right here. Okay. The election inspector appointments. Village clerk Doris Wickizer requests the following be appointed election inspectors for the upcoming village election held on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at a rate of two hundred dollars per day. I believe it was a year or so that this board approved the bump up because we were, we were woefully underpaying the folks here and I think we brought it up to make it more consistent with what the other municipalities in the county was doing for, for the November elections. So for registration day, Elsa Cameron will serve as chairperson along with Barbara Gabhart. Election day table, Barbara Gazda, Phyllis Murphy, Barbara Flukehoff and Lauren Anderson. Alternates, Mary Ann McInary, Rita Panessa, William Zuck and Claudia Depkin. Election day machine, Elsa Cameron and Barbara Gabhart. Field tech of voting machine, Ray Toraca of a cost of two hundred dollars per machine. If memory serves, we, we normally have two machines?
I think so, but I don't, this is a small election, so I don't know.
We may only have one. I think when the national elections, we get two, yes. Okay, two hundred dollars per machine. Alright, um, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is to set village voter registration day. Now, we, I've been monitoring this the last four years that I've been mayor and I think we had our high watermark, one year of one person coming and the other three years, nobody coming. Or it was like two people and I think then there was zeros.
I know somebody who might come this year.
I know, I know two people who might.
Alright, I love it. Alright, I love it. Um, Doris, how are we promoting that? Should we have something on the village website? I would say yes.
Facebook.
And the village Facebook page, maybe a, uh, a screen graphic of voter registration day and making sure that we indicate that registering to vote here only allows you to vote in village elections. You still have to go through the county to vote in the national elections and the state elections. I'm right on that, right? I'm pretty confident that voter registration here is just for the village election.
That's correct.
I, thank you. Bill, you're giving me a snake eye.
Just because I think they fill out the same form that a registrant fills out. And it can be forwarded to the county, right?
Been filled out in time and you're late, you could still vote in the village election.
Okay.
But if you, if you're late is basically the issue.
Alright, so let me go ahead and set the registration day. So whereas the next general election for officers will be held on the eighteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-five and by officers meaning the mayor's position and trustee positions. Whereas no person shall be entitled to vote at any village election whose name does not appear in the register for the election district in which he or she claims to be entitled to vote. And whereas it is the duty of the inspectors of election to prepare such register of qualified voters for the district for which they were appointed. And whereas section fifteen dash one-one-eight of the election law of the state of New York requires that every village hold a registration day for each general village election unless the village has adopted a resolution abolishing voter registration day. So now therefore be it resolved that registration day for the Village of Cornwall and Hudson shall be held on Saturday, the eighth of March from twelve PM to five PM in the Edward C. Molton Junior Boardroom herein at Village Hall, three two five Hudson Street, Cornwall and Hudson, New York, one two five two zero. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that handles that. Um, and then you have, yep, it's right there. Okay, so the building DPW secretary removal from probationary status. How long was, Dave, do you know off the top of your head, was that an eighteen-month, um, probationary status or twelve months?
Twelve months, I believe we did.
I think so too, yeah. I think we go the longest with our cops. I think that's their eighteen. I think everybody else, we normally do twelve.
Anywhere from six to twelve.
Okay, um, so, uh, as mayor, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Janelle Stong on behalf of the village board. She is a village building, she is the village's building and DPW's, building department and DPW secretary on completing her one year of probationary employment today and becoming a permanent village employee. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize and direct the village treasurer and/or deputy village clerk to notify the Orange County Department of Personnel that Ms. Stong has completed her probationary term and is now a permanent village employee. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Janelle's done a great job, Dave. Am I fair in me saying that?
I don't believe today was a year, but it's been passed.
Got it. I, I, I have had a number of people stop me and compliment me on the work that she does down there because she is the face of the building department and she handles the walk-ins, um, and directs them to the right place. So thank you, Janelle, and congratulations. Did I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next is the firehouse and the Donahue Farm events. Okay, so special event application for an upcoming wedding at Donahue Farm. Village clerk received a special event application for a wedding at Donahue Farm in November eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The village board will waive the prohibition of alcohol on village property for said event provided that all New York state laws are adhered to. The application is approved contingent on the appropriate insurance, fees and village regulations being followed. Setup and takedown will be accomplished the day before and the day following the event. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Obviously, this is something that, um, Phyllis Murphy, who is a member of our, um, Donahue Committee. Bill, is she the special events person on that committee or what's her title?
Typically, that's, uh, yeah.
That's her valuet. So she'll be looking after this and making sure that all the requirements are followed.
I spoke with the applicant's father today and he asserted verbally that they would absolutely comply with all requirements and everything that the village tells them they have to do.
Excellent. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now a special event application for an event at the fire department at Storm King Engine number two. Um, the village clerk received an, uh, special event application for an event to be held at the fire department on February fifteenth of this year, two thousand and twenty-five. The application is approved contingent upon the appropriate village regulations, ensuring that all appropriate village regulations are followed. Setup and takedown will be accomplished right before and right after the event. Michael, are you familiar with what this event is? No, Doris, any?
Haskamp, it was approved by, um, fire, the fire department, but Charlie and
Rick, are you aware what this is? February fifteenth, um, using the firehouse, somebody applied for it. Do we know what the details are?
It's a baby shower.
It's a baby shower.
It's, uh, an employee, isn't it?
Yeah, Haskamp is an employee.
Just come here and tell me.
No, I'm asking you. I was, I was asking if you
You said, you know what it is and then you said it's a baby shower.
No, because she whispered right here, it's a baby shower.
Baby shower.
It is? Well, thank you. Alright, so, and it's a village employee?
Haskamp, Richard Haskamp, it works at the DPW and Patrick Conley is the member of the firehouse. That is, will, will be on site.
Alright.
So he's sponsored.
So may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, this is not on the agenda because, um, in attorney-client, uh, session, the village board discussed, um, our, our bargaining agreement, um, with the CSEA members. Um, and the village board is in agreement that, uh, we are going to make this offer to them of which they have agreed in principle, but which they have to get their membership to vote and go through their processes and protocols on their end. So I'm gonna make a motion that the village board agrees with the offer to, that we've extended to the CSEA and are awaiting ratification on their end. Joe, should I add anything else to that?
Uh, this is the draft memorandum of agreement between the village and the CSEA.
Wait, where are you reading that, Jim?
He's reading it from the top, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
The title, so it's the draft, you're authorizing or approving, uh, the village's, uh, draft memorandum of village and the CSEA's draft memorandum of agreement. I don't see a date on this, but it would be, um, for the, for a three-year contract effective March first, twenty twenty-five.
No, effective February first, right?
Yes.
Yeah, effective February first or subject to their agreement and ratification. With the village had offered, it was a, it was a three-year deal that we offered. Obviously, the, the details of which will be public once it's ratified on their end, but it was a thirty-six-month contract. But the village board agreed that if the union came to terms with the village, we would give them an extra month. So it would begin at the beginning of February as opposed to beginning on March first. So it's thirty-seven months.
Okay, but this document has the March first date is what I'm saying.
So, yep, so, um, yeah, I mean, if they, it, it's on their end because I believe there's like a ten-day period that they have to Mike, am I, that's, that's what my understanding was, but that they have to, I guess, go through before they can approve it or agree to it.
They have to ratify it.
Yeah, so that may push it into February or push it to March first. But we had agreed in terms that if they could get it ratified on their end, the village would be willing to start it on February first.
Okay, this doc, yeah, that's fine. The document in two different places says March first, so.
Yes.
So you're authorizing, uh, or approving the MOA between the village and the CSEA uh, with an effective date on, with an effective date of February first.
If possible.
Through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-eight.
Through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-eighth, such that that is leap year?
No.
Twenty-eight should be.
It is the twenty-eighth is leap year?
No, this is the twenty
Twenty twenty-eight should be a leap year.
Right, because he said February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-eight, so that's gotta be a leap year.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I just wanted that confirmed. Okay, alright, so, so Joe, are we good in the event that it can't get done on their end? Are we good, the village board is good with the contract as written to start on March first? Or February first if the union can ratify it and get it back to us? Is that okay?
I think you need to deci, I think you need to decide whether this is gonna start February first or March first. If you're approving it and it takes them a couple of, it takes them until February third to sign it and get it back to you, that wouldn't necessarily mean it wasn't effective February first.
So we're gonna make it effective February first and that just solves that problem.
That's
Okay, I'm sorry, I got, I got into the weeds too much. So we're making it effective Fe- So we're making it effective February first, two thousand and twenty-five, to run until February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-eight, thirty-seven months?
Correct.
Fair enough. Okay, did I get a second? This is the discussion, right?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that is done. Okay, next order of business is other business. Are we done with resolutions? Any additional resolutions?
There might be with the firehouse and the C O A.
Oh, alright, Dave, let's... Oh, wait a minute, what now?
We haven't decided.
Whoa.
Well, I mean, it was, it was up near the, the special events in the firehouse. They might be resolutions.
The exhaust hood, is that what you mean?
No, no, yeah, the exhaust hood is a separate thing.
We have to approve the calendar for the year, Bill?
Oh, and the, um...
Oh, special events. Where did I leave that off? Okay.
It's in there.
It's in there.
Under other business.
Could you take a look at that and make sure that there was no conflicts?
Yes, there are no conflicts.
There are no conflicts.
And I printed it, but it, it wasn't a...
Okay.
...finally written resolution.
Okay, I got it, okay. So I got a reach out from the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee in concert with the Cornwall Youth Committee, and they're proposing a number of exciting events and they're looking for the Board to approve them. Um, they're also planning two events in town. One is a catered dinner and a movie, and also a movie night at Town Hall, which will obviously require the town to approve those, of course, but the town would need to use our equipment for that, so the Village Board would be essentially, um, okaying that as well. Um, here's what the events are, Sunday, March sixteenth, Eggs in Kegs, which is the second annual Saint Patrick's Day fundraiser at the Rock Wall. Do we know, is that fundraiser, Mike, for the Special Events Committee?
Yes.
Understood, okay, that's a good event, I went last year and it was...
Jim, you were there, it was well attended.
Yes, yes, it was very good stuff.
Alright, number two, yep, it's a, it's a good event. Number two, Saturday, June fourteenth, with a rain date, the Sunday, June fifteenth, a complete unknown Cornwall Folk Festival at Donahue Farm Property. This will serve as the Independence Day fundraiser. The Storm King Fire Company is gonna sell chicken barbecue. Alcohol will be sold as part of that fundraiser. Pre-show music festival, offering free performance slots to those who want to play, like the Newport Folk Festival, which is the climax of the movie. The M C will be Mr. John Joya, a Village resident, and folks, if you don't know him, I'm sure you, you should probably, who plays at a lot of concerts and things around here. Um, and the plan is to coordinate the schools to get young performers to perform and participate as well. Okay, so I'll leave that one out, okay. I'll go on to the next event, Saturday, August sixteenth, with a rain date set for Sunday, August seventeenth, the Cornwall Youth Committee Fundraiser Movie, which is gonna be Ferris Bueller at the Farm. For the movies, Ferris Bueller's Days Off, Day Off, right? Okay, there's not a movie Ferris Bueller at the Farm. I might have missed that one. There will be food trucks there, alcohol sold as part of the fundraiser, and a pre-show Sam Hill trivia contest.
That's a person.
I was just gonna say, I'm gonna show my ignorance here, who is Sam Hill?
Uh, she used to host trivia at Two Alice's Coffee Lounge.
Got it, okay. Uh, August thirtieth, Music and Food Festival at the Village Square. So this is gonna be a new one with a partnership, um, with the Storm King Fire Company, correct, Mike?
Yeah, we're still working out the details on it, that's not a hundred percent certain, but...
We're just, we're, we're tapping the dates right now. Saturday, September twentieth, with the rain date of Sunday, September twenty-first, Dirty Dancing to be played at Town Hall. There'll be a pre-show oldies band, there'll be no alcohol for this, this event will be in in the town. They have different policies and, and they have the same policies, but it would be their decision whether or not they wanted to allow that, and there will be food trucks as well. Saturday, October fourth, the Rocky Horror Picture Show will play at Donahue Farm Property. Later evening show, it'll probably start around nine-thirty, because back in the old days, it was usually the midnight movie, you remember? Um, alcohol will also be sold here as part of a fundraiser. Saturday, October eighteenth, with a rain date, Sunday, October nineteenth, the Color Bash at the Farm will be held where it was last year at noon. Um, I don't know if the route plans are going into the town or not, or just doing the Village Loop like they did last time, I'll leave that to the committees. Okay, you haven't decided the route yet. Saturday, November twenty-ninth, the Village Tree Lighting. Um, Sunday, December seventh, will be a sensitive Santa, which is, I think, something we did this year.
Yep.
Um, which is like no lights for kids that are, you know, sensitive to...
Kind of a private, private Santa viewing for any kids that might have some trouble with the, with the crowds.
Good, that'll be Sunday, December seventh. Um, I'm guessing it's gonna be held somewhere at the Storm King Theater Building? Perfect. December fifteenth through nineteenth is the week of the storytime where various folks from around the Village, um, read, uh, Christmas, Hanukkah, and holiday stories, um, to kids that they select for kids. It's a, it's a good event and...
Looking for new readers, aren't they?
Well, they, they're gonna need some new readers next year.
You have time on your hands.
Oh, I have plenty of time on my hands, you haven't seen the honey-do list yet. Wednesday, December thirty-first, obviously, is the Junior Ball Drop, which is one of our most popular events now, which is at eight o'clock, eight o'clock, right, Mike?
Six to eight.
Yeah.
Right, but the ball drop was right before...
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five, and then...
Sure.
And the beauty is, I don't have to go to the midnight one next year, I just get to go to the junior one and then go to bed. Alright, so I'm gonna ask the Board right now, um, I spoke to the Village Clerk this morning, asked her to de-conflict those dates, make sure that the Village did not have anything else previously scheduled at any of these venues, and she did that and cleared it up and said, no, there's no, uh, it will not impact anything else, so I'd like the Village Board to approve this on behalf of the Special Events Committee and the Cornwall Youth Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just as a point of information, uh, not organized by this committee, but the, uh, menorah lighting will probably be on December fourteenth, I would think. That's the first night of Hanukkah.
And that is gonna be the first night of Hanukkah?
That's the first night of Hanukkah.
Alright, good.
That's a Sunday, so...
Okay, good, can you make sure we add that on there, um, Doris?
It's not by this committee, but...
Good, yep. Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, and then Dave? So the building inspector has been conducting fire safety evaluations of, obviously, private, uh, or, or commercial, uh, businesses within the Village as well as Village facilities. Obviously, the Village owns the property where the Storm King Engine Two Firehouse is, um, and the facility itself, and there were a number of violations related to the, uh, the kitchen. Um, do we know how old that kitchen equipment is in there? Mike, Dave, Captain, any idea how old that, that kitchen equipment is?
I would say initially, it was from seventy-eight, but things have been changed over.
But you're thinking eighties or early nineties at the latest?
I think the hood system was probably seventy-eight, but we've changed this, the stove since then, and the freezer and stuff.
So obviously, um, you know, other than the Easter breakfast fundraiser, um, member meetings, what are some of the things that you guys use the, uh, the kitchen for?
Um, we use it for pre-cooking for the Fireman's Fair and also any community groups that come through there that sometimes use the room, they use the kitchen sometimes.
Got it, so we're in a little bit of a pickle here in that the current, um, stove exhaust... Dave, you wanna describe what it is that needs to be replaced to bring us into...
The, the current hood system and, uh, fire suppression system don't meet New York State fire code.
Which is a horrible thing for our firehouse, not to have things that are in compliance, so this is a necessity.
Yeah, so I, I have a quote from one company currently, I have another company coming in either tomorrow or the next day. I spoke to counsel on this, I'm trying to get three quotes, but I would like the Village Board to pre-authorize for us to move forward with this because it's gonna take some time, because it's a stainless steel hood, it, the new systems now require makeup air as well as venting, the system has to be redesigned for the ancil system, so...
Does it have an ancil system now?
Yes, but it's...
What is an ancil system?
It, well, fire suppression system.
Got it.
So it, it's, uh, that won't work with the current system. So everything has to be replaced.
Alright.
In order for it to meet code.
So the one that you showed me this morning and, and the one that you showed me the parts to, um, costs approximately twenty-four thousand dollars, is that the ballpark of...
I would say, I would, that would be the high mark.
That would be the high mark, okay? Yep, this is...
So this quote's high, you think?
No, that, that's, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna divulge anything because we're trying to solicit more quotes, so...
So you're just...
There is, there is one piece in this quote that we could take out, that I added, that, that not necessarily has to be in there, but when they were redoing the, because it, the kitchen design, I put in to have a fryer put in, in case they wanna do it in the future. It, it includes installing the fryer, which is minimal in the grand scheme.
So, right, so we presently don't have any fryers in there.
No, it has a stove.
So that changes the code for the ancil system, doesn't it, dramatically?
Excuse me?
If you don't have a fryer, doesn't that change the way the ancil system's set up?
No.
It's different and...
No, because you, because you're cooking with flame, you're cooking with flame and grease, regardless.
Even if you have electric burners?
It's a gas stove, sir.
Okay.
And, uh, the fire, the fire code really doesn't, doesn't distinguish between, it does distinguish between, but you're still required to have the system.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Alright, so Dave, you're gonna go and try to find... Excuse me, you're gonna go and try to...
I'm gonna try to find at least three, I have, I'm gonna have two for sure, I'm trying to get a third that's...
Alright, so, so how do we wanna, so, so how would, how do we wanna approach this? How do we wanna approach, I'm asking, how do we wanna approach this?
Dave, are you just asking the Board to allow you to seek those quotes?
If we put, if we put this off till the end of February, at the February meeting.
There will not be enough time to get this done by April.
By the middle of April.
But how do we, yeah...
Okay. Well, we have what, the work session is the tenth or so?
So will we have three quotes by then?
The work session.
There's a, there, there is a work session on the tenth.
Do you think you can get the, the quotes by then?
Oh, I should be able to have quotes by then, sure, I won't be here, but yes.
Yeah, I'd rather do it on the tenth, that way we know we got some numbers and we got three proposals.
You don't have anything to add on yet.
Yeah.
Is that...
However you guys wanna move, I'll move.
Are, are you, Dave, are you suggesting that if we wait till February tenth, that, that, that might be too long? And that, obviously, we're looking at the Easter breakfast where they need to have a kitchen that they can, that they can do their biggest fundraiser outside of the fair. So is that gonna give you enough time, or are you seeking approval, will you tell us?
I, I'm not sure how long it's gonna take them to build it, to be honest with you. I haven't got a timeframe on that until we get...
Okay, how about this, how about this then? Can you get three quotes, and when you do that, I'll notify the Board, we can hold a quick special meeting.
That's fine.
And have, I need three people for that, but we'll have a quick special meeting and we'll approve it.
That's fine.
Alright?
Well, just... Just understand, there's, there's no hard and fast requirement that the system be installed prior to your breakfast and the next cooking event that happens in the kitchen, right? It's been adequate for prior years, is that correct?
It's in violation.
But it's been in violation and now that it's, it's on paper, they can't use it.
There's no provision for, as long as you are making a good faith effort to update this...
Have you met Manny before?
My understanding is that the code enforcement officer is responsive to good faith efforts to, uh, improve something that he's...
Not for fire safety stuff, he will, he, he will not budge. And I'm only gonna say this, Bill, because we also have experience across the street at our parish where he shut down the Knights of Columbus Kitchen for the same thing. And they basically have a fish fry, they use it for a couple of meals. Nope, because it's got an outdated exhaust system, it's not safe because it's a fire safety issue, shut it down.
My final comment would be, is there any place less likely to stay on fire if it catches on fire than the firehouse kitchen? Not, that, that wouldn't move the needle either, the fact that it's literally within the firehouse.
Again, I'll refer to it, if you met Manny before. Yeah.
Well, because these are... With all haste then, I guess, is the idea.
Well, this wouldn't be a fire, it would be a culinary incident, right?
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Culinary disaster.
A culinary incident.
Culinary disaster.
Alright, so David, i- is that acceptable terms?
As, as...
Soon as you get three?
It's fine with me.
And I will, I'll reach out to the Board and we will, we will hold a special meeting to make a decision on it. Alright, okay, so that's that matter, so we're not passing any resolution on that tonight. Um, okay, moving on to other business. Okay, let me just go through a couple of things here, I'll try to keep these as short as possible. In regards to Village flag protocols, one of the things that came up, um, during the, during the, uh, the past month was the fact that President Carter, um, our thirty-ninth president, passed away on, today's the twenty-seventh, on December twenty-eighth, I believe. As a result of that, for every president that passes away, the federal government requires all federal buildings, institute, installations and facilities, um, lower their flags to the half-mast position. Typically speaking, though it's not required at the state level to follow suit, it's not required at the local level, we typically follow national protocol. If the White House comes out and says we're lowering flags for this, the Village does the same thing. If Governor Hokel says we're lowering our flags for this, the Village does the same thing. Well, one of the things that had come up was the question about inauguration day. Um, there were a lot of people that had asked me, are we raising the flag on inauguration day? Um, I looked at it, I said, there's a thirty-day mourning period, I discussed it with individual members of the Village Board, and I said, we're gonna honor President Carter for thirty days, but we'll do a brief re-raising of the flag on inauguration day, which was January twentieth, a week ago tonight, because I'd seen that some states had done it, some state governors had decided to do that, and on Capitol Hill, the Ha, the Speaker of the House had said that Capitol Hill flags would be raised. Well, that set off a small firestorm. Now, there were some people that were just apoplectic that anything would be done to honor the forty-seventh president coming in. There were a lot of good faith arguments that were tossed my way, which was, why is the Village going outside of U.S. flag protocol? The protocol says thirty days mourning for a president, leave it alone. So I researched it, and when I researched it, I found out that only one time in U.S. history, we're two-hundred-and-forty-eight years old, only one time has a president, a former president passed away during inauguration period, and it was when Harry Truman, um, passed away, and remember, Harry Truman was president at the end of World War Two, um, passed away on December twenty-sixth of nineteen seventy-two. The nation mourned him by lowering all of our flags thirty, for thirty days, and then President Nixon was inaugurated for his second term, which didn't work out too well for him, but inaugurated for his second term on January twentieth of nineteen seventy-three. And I found a picture online, um, of the flags at half-mast at the inauguration. So I made a decision, we're not gonna raise them then, because there is precedent. As long as you show me precedent, that's what we'll do. Well, that set off a firestorm the other way, of people saying, you're not following what they're doing in D.C. on Capitol Hill, and you're caving to a couple of people, the bottom line is, I felt like it was the appropriate thing to do. Immediately after he was sworn in, our current president, um, signed a flurry of executive orders, and one of them was, is that all future inaugurations, flags will be at the full mast position. So tomorrow, I've already asked the D P W Superintendent and the firehouse to make sure that you raise flags at close of business or at dusk, because that's the end of the thirty-day mourning period for President Carter, and in the future, Village mayors, town supervisors, anybody else, won't have to make a decision because now it is, it is flag code that at inauguration days they'll be at full mast.
Well, that executive order doesn't change flag code, it doesn't have the binding force of law.
Yeah, but flag code...
It probably will soon.
Yeah, I, I, flag, the flag protocol is not law. Flag protocol is not law.
It was, it, the flag convention was in nineteen twenty-three, Dave is right, and the flag protocol is not...
Research time, but gotcha.
Go ahead.
Regardless, yeah, yeah.
But anyway, so if anybody asks any questions about, why did the Village do this, why were the flags lowered for so long? Why didn't they come back up on inauguration day, or why am I reading this on social media? Because, like I said, a few people got exercised about it, the vast majority of people, I think, understood why we, why the decision was made, why we went that route with it, and so, that's it. But we do follow federal, um, flag protocols emanating out of the White House, and we do follow what the governor does. Interestingly enough, the night before the inauguration, Governor Hokel decided to run the flags on inauguration day, up the pole briefly for that one day, I just didn't wanna go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, so we left ours down.
Just one thing I wanna add, and I have, I'm not disputing anything that you, you've already brought up. Just to clarify, the U.S. code, flag code is applicable to federal installations, not state or local. He's already pointed out that we do follow that, but just, just so everyone's clear, it is not applicable to state or local entities, it is federal installations, simply put, but we follow it.
We follow this federal and the state, you know, when they decide. We follow the federal and the state, you know, when they decide. Okay, alright, so enough about that. Number two. I think it was last September, I think Jason, I actually think that you wrote an, um, an article about it, but the Cornwall Yacht Club had donated a sign that was commemorating the wreck of the Armistead. The Armistead was a World War One vessel, I think that was put into service in nineteen nineteen, um, at a time where America was sending troops to Europe to, to, to fight, um, in World War Two. And this vessel was built out of iron and wood and was supposed to be not indestructible, but its purpose was troop movements and to counter the German U-boats that there was, there was concern where in the Atlantic and, you know, and you know, shooting, you know, um, torpedoing our, our boats. In nineteen fifty-five, it was taken out of service and somehow brought up the Hudson River and found its final resting spot, which is just. Yeah, they sunk it ju, and turned it into an, an artificial reef, but, you know, down, um, down s, just south of the yacht club, you'll see it down there. Obviously, a lot of the wood is rotted away, there's not much of it left, the, the ex, the, the skeleton of the, of the boat is there. The yacht club had wanted us to take a look at finding someplace to put it and we had gone down there, taken a look at it. I went down there with the village historian and the DPW superintendent and we looked at places down there, um, just south of where our boat ramp is, but just north of where the Cornwall Yacht Club is, where the little beachhead is, did it make sense to put the sign down there? It's a very nice sign that commemorates it and really, it's kinda honoring this, this, this vessel that served us well during World War One. Um, but we just didn't think it did to do, you know, work well because you couldn't see the wreck itself. And that was just gonna have people looking at it and then wanting to walk around and try to go down there. It's not safe to go down there. You can't get down there in the rocks and get into the Hudson. We looked at a couple of other options and one of them was up on, is it Cornwall Avenue?
Grandview.
I know, I know where Grandview is, but what's that runs into it? Grand, Grandview and Cornwall. There's a little perch there that really is, I felt, a perfect spot for it because you could erect the sign there. Um, it's like a lookout post and you can actually see down Donahue Memorial Park and you can see the wreck itself. Um, I don't think it met with, with eager anticipation from some of the, the residents up there who were concerned and they raised a, 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 a list of fair things, you know, you're gonna have to put garbage cans here. That's gonna bring the bears in. You're gonna have people parking up there, even though you could, when we redo Dock Hill Road, when the New York Forward Grant, um, goes towards us redoing Dock Hill Road and making a walking trail, we were gonna put up a wood sign down there that was gonna be aesthetically pleasing and it could point up to where the armored sign is. Anyway, I'm gonna ask the village board this. Do we need to look at a different place? I mean, if residents up there are not shot in the butt about us putting a sign up there and they did raise issues that, you know, there's no parking on that road, you're now gonna encourage people to park, even if you tell people you can't park up there and then becomes a hangout and then it's, you know, now you're gonna obstruct the view because if you put it up there, you know, it might, you know. Do we look at other places? I mean.
Yeah.
Maybe by the church there?
Is it visible from in front of where the willow trees are currently? Right before you get to the?
It's hard, Bill, you're saying, to be able to see the wreck itself, you might.
I don't think so, yeah, the marines.
It's, it's just in the way. So anyway, my plan was in the spring, as Jason chronicled in his article and we talked about this last summer. Um, our plan was to do this in the spring. Um, I'm going to continue to look at other options. I'm gonna ask the board to consider the same and anybody else, Dave especially, that if you could think of a spot or find a spot in your travels around the village and say, hey, this would work, but we gotta take the neighborhood into account there too. I thought it was a perfect spot, but I understand the concern of the residents and I certainly don't wanna do something to, you know, to, to make the residents up there, you know, have an issue with the village because we're, we're bringing people up into a private neighborhood.
It's tight neighborhood.
It is a tight neighborhood, I mean.
Really one car around there.
It's one car width, yeah. Okay, so that's that, um, Albany budget impact. Um, it's getting late. I would just tell people, if you have not seen the governor's budget, please go online and look at it. I mean, I think it's important, just like if you live in the village, it's important to take a look at our budget. Um, some of the things I mentioned at the top of the meeting, um, the budget is nineteen billion dollars more than last year's budget. I think the total budget right now is two hundred and fifty-two billion with a B. Um, now, some of the things that, you know, would concern us, um, is AIM funding. AIM funding is the aid and incentives, aid and incentives for municipalities. Last year, they bumped it up fifty million dollars. I think there's a bump up this year, or at least it stays ta, static, but that's an amount of seven hundred and fifteen million dollars. Um, they're, they're targeting money for the downtown revitalization initiatives and the New York Ford grant of which we got. Remember, the state doesn't just cut us a check. We won the award two years ago. We have to get projects done, completed and then submit for reimbursement. We're still waiting on the state to give us the okay to move ahead on contracts. Blessedly, the town has a lot of the heavy lifting on this, um, on the combined projects. I mean, we have projects down here that are just ours, like the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail, the projects at the Donahue Farm Property, but the, the, the town has the Small Project Fund, the town has the Connector Trail between the village and the town, and the town has the branding, wayfinding and, and what's the third one, Bill? Branding, marketing, wayfinding or something like that. So they're the lead on that. We have a say in it because we're splitting the money, but by the same token, they'll be putting out the RFPs, they'll be, Josh will be dealing with the headaches that blessedly we don't have to deal with. Um, so what else? Access to medical services. Um, this is from Governor Hokel. The executive budget seeks to define EMS as an essential service and requires counties develop EMS mapping. That's been something that I think, I think the Senate wanted, but the Assembly didn't, or the Assembly wanted and approved, but the Senate didn't. So they've gotta figure it out, but that would be something that I think would be a long time coming because EMS, unlike police and fire, is not considered an essential service in New York State. And I hope that changes and obviously the gu, governor agrees. Uh, pro-housing communities. You'll remember we had a, a lengthy debate and discussion about this. As part of the current state budget, the state made the pro-housing community designation a requirement to receive certain discretionary funding, including through the downtown revitalization initiative and the New York Ford program among others. Now, we're grandfathered in because they didn't have this requirement when we were awarded the New York Ford money, but going forward, it's gonna be something that future boards are going to need to look at when they start putting the hammer down and we're not eligible to put in for grants because we have not signed that aspirational document. I, I keep coming back to that, aspirational document regarding being a pro-housing community. Things may change, more details may come out, we may learn a, uh, something more this way or that way. But again, I don't plan on tackling this in my last two months here, but it is something that future boards are going to have to wrestle with as you start putting in for grants. Um, and really, I'm not gonna do too much more in here because you all can look at it, but I think it's good for the trustees just to be aware of what the state, what the governor's proposed, um, is in that budget. So take a look, it's online, it's easy or I can get you a copy of this. Okay, and how does that impact us too? We're hoping that through that AIM money, that there might be some money for infrastructure, uh, much like they give us money every year or return money to us for CHIPS, which is the highway program. Dave, CHIPS stands for?
Capital Highway Improvement Program.
Right, and there's talk about including things like culverts, um, water system, um, infrastructure projects, sidewalks, things like that.
Dams.
That, dams, um, things like that. So anyway, something to keep an eye on, AIM money. Okay, I can see I'm losing everybody. Lastly, um, lastly, I'm losing everybody. Lastly, um, I asked the chief after the horrific terror attack that happened on New Year's Eve in New Orleans on Bourbon Street, where on Bourbon Street, they had a plan in place, like everybody does, but unfortunately, it wasn't fully executed for New Year's Eve. There would have been a different posture for the Sugar Bowl, which was to be held a couple of days later. What they didn't have was bollards on the sidewalks to prevent people from driving on sidewalks. They had a, they had a vehicle, a police vehicle that the terrorist ended up going around and circumventing it by driving up on the sidewalks. What I'd like to look at, and again, every year we should be doing a little bit more to protect mass gatherings. Fourth of July is a perfect example. New Year's Eve ball drop is a perfect example. And maybe we consider for the Cornwall tree lighting. We put that many people into Village Square. Um, it is an inviting target of opportunity, um, that putting dump trucks and fire trucks is not a guarantee that you're gonna keep people safe, but it is a deterrent. And I had the chief look into sidewalk bollards. They're not chief, uh, they're not cheap. Chief, what was the, what was the round amount for one, one of those sections?
Made contact with mobile, uh, with Meridian Barrier Company, their mobile vehicle barrier system. They come in six-foot sections and it's approximately sixty-three hundred dollars per.
Whoa.
Six-foot section.
And the problem is, the, the heft and the weight of them, it would require essentially, Dave, either an excavator. We obviously don't have a crane in the village, but it makes it, go ahead.
They're using right now on the bridge, they're using water-filled bollards. They don't weigh anything. You dump the water when they're done.
The plastic ones, you're saying, instead of the concrete ones?
They work. They work. That's what they use on construction sites all over the place.
Dave, could I ask you to look at that as far as procurement of those, that if it is just a matter of?
Same as what Steve's saying, Steve, Steve's is, you know, that's big time.
Not the concrete sections, but something that we could do to say?
Using on the bridge right now.
Right, and what I'm talking about is, we always shut the road off on First Street, right, for the Fourth of July. We block that off. But somebody could drive up onto the sidewalk, go around it, and if we average ten thousand to twelve thousand people on Fourth of July, then go screaming down Main Street, mowing people down. So are we really doing due diligence if we just park a cop car or a dump truck there if somebody can just go right around it? Again, I don't have all solutions. It's never gonna be perfect, but we should be moving in the direction of making it better. Could we at least look into that? Because the other option the chief looked into was, you can actually get them on loan from the county, but again, I think these were the concrete ones or the steel ones?
Steel ones.
And they are heavy, and so.
The Roll Guard K twenty-six hundred and, um.
You gotta go pick them up.
County owns them, Steve? County owns them?
Yes, they got them through a, a grant a couple of years ago. You have, you have to, you know, make, obviously you have to make, reserve them.
Yeah.
Cause they're used all over the county.
Yeah, it's probably used on.
Again, we wouldn't be using them to block off all of Village Square. We would be using them on those places where somebody could ostensibly pull a vehicle up onto the sidewalk and just go around. So we're looking at it. I just wanted to throw that out there, the, the numbers, the cost. And then the difficulty of this too is we look at, well, who's gonna put them in place? Who's gonna move them? How easy are they to move? If you put them in the street, you know, we, we shut down the street for the junior ball drop and as soon as the junior ball drop is done and people disperse, half an hour later, the roadways are open. We shut them back down for the senior ball drop. I mean, it's that quick and that easy. Putting these things in place, although it wouldn't be in the roadways, it would be on sidewalks, putting these in place are going to complicate that, of course, so. Alright, enough on that. The free information. I think, yeah, I haven't left anything out, right? No. Um, oh, oh, Rick, this is for you. The February work session, it is on the agenda. The Board of Fire Commissioners and the Fire Chief will make a presentation to the village board. You'll have to go behind Charlie though, cause Charlie's the rock star and he gets to go first. But, uh, on capital reserve request and on funding for a tower ladder replacement, am I correct? Those two items, okay? Other freer information, village board work session is scheduled from Monday, February tenth at seven PM he, uh, in the work session room. President's Day holiday, offices for the village will be closed Monday, February seventeenth. Village Board Business Meeting is scheduled from Monday, February twenty-fourth at seven PM. Voter Registration Day, which the village just passed, um, will be held here on Saturday, March eighth, from twelve PM to five PM. And finally, Election Day, Tuesday, March eighteenth. Don't forget, the village, a number of years ago, expanded our hours. We will be open for voters from six AM until nine PM. And that's all I have. Going around the table. Trustee Paleota.
Um, I don't think I have anything to add. There was so much handed. No, I think I'm good. I got nothing.
Okay, trustee Brain.
Uh, just thanks to the departments for all your hard work. Uh, I, I was aware of the water department fixing that leak up on Boulevard on December twenty-third and, uh, felt their pain. It was cold and I could hear it from down in my, my house. I could hear the equipment working up there. So I appreciate that and everybody else as well. Thanks for the handling the uh, powdery mineralized water that fell from the sky. We don't say the word.
Great job on the roads. Hopefully we don't get any more snow. I'm good.
Alright, Jim?
I second everyone's comments. I'm good.
Alright, I'm done too. So, uh, any alibis from department heads? Any alibis? No. Counselor, anything?
I'm good.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to close the village board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?